Silence your cell phones. Present with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any additional items to add?
Aaron Lam, yes.
Need a motion on the consent agenda?
I think motion that we approve the consent agenda, which is the town council minutes for April twenty-sixth.
Want my consent agenda to favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move on down to new business. Uh, Executive Director, scoad.
Yes. Okay, I have not been to a meeting like this before, so forgive me.
Okay.
Um, what would you guys like?
We're out in the middle of nowhere, so we didn't.
I have to tell everybody, this um, job that I took on recently is not my background. I grew up in Clamath County for a entrepreneur farmer family. And I left for Los Angeles for the past thirty years doing licensing and distribution for Twentieth Century Fox, until it got sold by Disney. And I decided to come home to raise my family. And I wanted to help the community and if there was a job available, and it was scoad. And I wanted to help both ca- both counties, it was great. So I took this job, um, not having a background, therefore I don't know what to s- how to sit, where to sit. What we're here for today is to ask for a fifty thousand dollar budget, to be put into the budget. Because we are restructuring scoad. I'm um, I'm rehauling the every program in scoad. Where it's been, it had an executive director for the past thirty years. Um, and I think she did a very good job that she worked in a silo. And so what I've decided to do, because my background is in developing, it, I was last um, developing an enterprise division within Twentieth Century Fox to take down the silos within the company. And I think that's what we need to do at scoad, is actually take down the silos between um, to help improve streamlining and getting rid of duplication of efforts. So our budget went from zero last year. I believe it was zero the year before. What is hard is we don't have an accounting system that was maintained. And so I can't give you all the numbers at the moment. But what I can tell you is when I took the job at scoad as the business development specialist, um, we had COVID grants to give out. And so the first thing I did is asked for a list of businesses here in town and here in Clamath, and there was no list. I'm like, how do you reach out to your businesses? So we went through, we started compiling this and we were able to get to Lakeview proper, six hundred thousand dollars to the businesses within six months. So the fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for is going to go to a headcount. Cause we resourced them, that's what it's paid for.
How many staff members are there currently?
There are four right now, and we're adding on a fifth, she's our rare number, um, right now. And so we'd like five.
I don't see where we can come up with fifty thousand dollars down for budget right now.
Okay. And I knew this was late in the process, cause we didn't know what we were supposed to do at all. Um, I really wanna put it in even for like next year. We have money coming in, I think we're going to be okay. But I want to make sure that we do get on our budget, so that we can have the staff in place, so that we can get monies. What is amazing about scoad, it's an economic development district, and it's a special district. And a lot of monies that come from federal and state come to us directly. And I don't think we've been asking for it, and I know you guys don't know what programs we even have art can offer, and this is what I want to get to, so we can hire people to get the money, and then get the programs, market them out, so you guys are aware of them.
Which I think is important, I think so too. Because I would kind of like to see maybe a little bit of a work session, you know, regarding it, so that we have more information on it.
And I would like to, I'd like to, and we can't do it right now, cause our accounting system is awful. I would give you a full budget of what we're going to use, it's staff, but then what programs we're going to get out into this community.
Right.
Cause I don't wanna just, like today, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just come in and say, okay, you guys give me fifty thousand dollars, I don't think it's fair.
People, people have to find us a half million dollars.
Out of this budget?
Yeah.
We're trying to find a hundred and twenty thousand for a police officer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's different text go ahead.
Well, and what, and truly what we're using it for is to bring in money, so you guys can get this.
Right.
Work session.
Yeah.
A work session, well, I think the work session, you know, when you have more information and you're, you know, more.
Yeah.
Solid on everything.
And so that we can understand more what's going on.
In the eight years I've been involved, this is the first time I've had scoad come and ask us for money.
Well, it's funny too, cause I thought it was just in, like supposed to be in the budget, and Michelle's like, no, no, I was talking. And then somebody, and Clamath said, why don't you ask for more? I'm like, how much can we ask for? So I'm like, it's slightly ridiculous at the moment. We'll get it together for all of you guys.
Can you allow questions from the floor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so I was involved for quite a few years, worked with scoad, part of the um, the team and everything. You're talking about restructuring, is your governing body, your governance changing, or?
No.
So, so there should be full accounting, there's a budget committee, there's, everything should be there.
There, it is, but the problem is Betty, you know Betty, and I really like Betty, and this is nothing. Betty worked, she really liked doing things by herself. And she, and Pam did stuff by herself. And she put, Betty would put stuff into MIP, three different accounting systems, but primarily MIP. But she didn't set up the backend enough. It would take her six weeks to get a budget to actual. So she would be compiling, so anytime there was a board meeting, she would start six weeks before to like pull in the numbers. I want it on the screen, you push a button every single day, you know. Janine, Shane is here, she's my finance person, we just hired her on. It's, I don't have six weeks, and because it's out of date, the moment you hand it to somebody. Um, so it's all there. She let, she retired, I was not going to take over, cause it's not my skill set, I don't know economic development, or so I thought. Um, and she didn't have a six, she, there was a succession planning committee. There was no succession um, plans. So we're learning things, just like, oh, we're taking care of this. Usually it's because we're um, we're behind on recording of something, is how we find out, okay, we have this program. You guys have a lot of programs, we're, we're giving you guys, we put out an RFP um, today for broadband. Cause we wanna get focus on Lake County for broadband, and then Clamath County excluding Clamath Falls. Dream Savers Program is a program that I think for your, is for low income people to save up money. There's a bunch of programs that we don't know about, you guys don't know about. So we wanna put them all together on a flyer and be able to give them to you guys, so you can market them. But it is all there, I, Betty was on top of her stuff, it was just she was working by herself. And Ginger, and Ginger was there, but Ginger was, I'm like, and so there's nothing, I think we walked around town today and everybody knows scoad, like all the businesses and stuff. I just wanna take it to the next step of we're all working together, cause that is my skill set, I think. You can get a lot more further along if we're all going the same direction.
Give us some information and stuff, so we can do work.
Okay. When, when?
I don't know, but we know what.
Okay.
Every program.
Whenever, yeah, whenever you, when you have, when you guys feel like you have things together enough to present.
Okay.
You know, like you were talking, talking with things.
Yeah, just contact me and we'll get it.
Okay.
We're gonna work session today.
Do I get a stay?
Sure.
Ginger is a little more comfortable.
I know, I am, I don't want to, I am.
Okay, so going down to the open, the gun range, Brett?
Uh, so I'm here today, uh, brought information, you guys should have it. Letter request to allow us to uh, put the motorcycle group camp up there at the range. Part of our contract, I have to bring before you guys, whenever we're gonna do anything that's not normal activity. So we're asking for that approval. Um, I think everybody knows about the motorcycle group, it's uh, they're behind me here, that'll be for prison in a minute. Uh, second thing I have is uh, we're wanting to put in a new pistol range up there. We have a bid and accepted it from Jasco Construction. Professional, the license, the bonded, it'll be engineered, it'll be done appropriate, it'll be done right, it'll be permanent. And so want to make sure that the board, council, everybody's aware of that, and we get the blessing on that also. So those are the things I have. I haven't had time, and I don't believe the town manager has either worked on our upcoming renewal of our contract at the end of this year. I made a few suggestions in there that would be helpful for the town and the gun club also. But I'm looking forward to that, it's not time sensitive until the end of the year, so. And I, do you have any updates on that at all?
No.
Yeah, so that's the three things that I have, uh, just, and if you have any questions. If you, if anybody's been up to gun range, we have Twentieth Century now. Um, our membership's staying right about one seventieth where we're at right now. Kept our membership dues down to twenty-five dollars. Um, so trying to keep it going. Cleaned up all the pallets up there, got those burned up. Got a work day coming up the twenty-first this month. Trying to make it really look good, because it enhances the Nomi Trail and everything right there, so. Anytime you guys wanna go up there, if you have any questions, give me a call.
Where, the location of the new building that you're wanting to put?
It's straight, it's straight north of the rifled one. It'll be similar in design, almost exactly the same, there'll be a roadway between them. And that way you can separate the pistol shooters from the rifle shooters. You can find a safety thing.
Yeah.
Cool. That's a good idea.
Do you need to go, do you, I think you need to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would make a motion that we approve the um, Warner Mountain Gun Club building, the pistol range building, up at the gun club.
Motion made, second?
Second. I do want to include that the motorcycle group can stay overnight at the same time.
Yeah, no, we're gonna do the all at the same time if you want. I don't see why not, that's always the same.
And if you don't mind me adding to that, I just looked, the date that I put on this was just eleven, twelve. That is incorrect, because they will be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I just come the weekend.
Oh, okay.
So uh, their stripper there, there, councilman there. So it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, um, yes, we can add that on, but they're welcome to spend the night there, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, sir.
Yeah.
Motion made, technical favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Resolution eleven thirty-one. This money here came from the COVID relief funds. Some of the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I need motion.
So I just wanna clarify, make so that we know what we're getting. Is that we are establishing a new fund in the budget for the water fund, which will be for the treatment plant.
The water treatment facility.
Yeah, facility.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I would make a motion that we approve resolution number one one three-one in the matter of creating a fund forty-two for the water treatment facility funds.
Motion made.
And you also need to have the ARPA, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's the second full item of that.
You should have added that in right here into the reading part, cause this is where she's reading it from.
Okay.
This is where they read from.
Okay.
So the hundred and seventy-five will probably be added.
Okay, so.
Um, it's just like the seventy thousand of the COVID relief money that we approved spending on GIS.
Mm-hmm.
We wanna spend a hundred and seventy-five of that initial two hundred and fifty-six towards the prep work we're doing on the water treatment facility. The stuff that we've done to date this year, before we get the first drawdown of the fifteen million.
And it's up to our department.
Right. It, it's, the hundred and seventy-five thousand is coming from the COVID nineteen relief that went to all the cities in the state of Oregon, um, from the federal government. Um, and we received uh, two hundred fifty-six thousand of that right now. So we're just asking to take a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that COVID nineteen relief fund money to put into the new water treatment facility fund forty-two.
When you get to fifteen million or twelve million, can that go back into some fund, so, okay, how is this period?
Yeah. We'll be able to draw it down, and it will go into this fund forty-two. So we can keep track of all of the expenditures that are happening at the creation and building of the water treatment facility. Rather than integrating it into a water fund.
So this is the best way to use the, the money, in fact?
I, I believe so, I, I had it earmarked to use for the water treatment facility, because I knew it would be a while before we could draw it down. Um, but we're still waiting on contracts from Business Oregon. I did send an email to Larry Holtz gang earlier. I think that was yesterday.
It was Monday.
I feel like today is Friday. Um, I sent him the email yesterday to say where are we at in our contractual process with Business Oregon? I feel like we should be getting closer to getting the contract. So um, as soon as that happens and it's approved, then we will be able to start drawing down the budget.
Like it's.
Yes, you may.
Kind of what this does too is, when you guys were in that other meeting, we had to pick up the, you seen how tight our schedule was? If we wait until we're fully funded, we're gonna have a really hard time making that December twenty, twenty twenty-six. And luckily we have an engineer in there that's really in work for us until we are funded. Energy period down about beyond to make sure that we're gonna stay on, on time. And what this does is help us keep in paid until we get funded. With the money, which could be just one, two more months. It's hard to say, but it depends on the contract. Uh, Business Oregon has so much financial needs that they're a little bit. But I think those hundred thousand five thousand, it was keep us moving, keep us ahead of curve, if you put on these guesses.
So the hundred and seventy-five thousand is the COVID nineteen money?
Correct.
But then there's also ARPA money?
And that's the fifteen million.
That's the fifteen million, okay. Is it, is it ARPA or? Okay, this says ARAP. And so I'm, that's, so it's got me confused.
So, needs to be revised or um, shredded with correction.
Okay, so I, I would go ahead and make the, the motion that we approve it with the correction that it's ARPA funds from the state of Oregon budget, and the COVID nineteen.
Okay?
Just say.
Say.
Motion favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Going down to, response to the Lake County Commissioners regarding the COVID enforcement officer partnership with the town, Michelle?
So we had a work session. Um, what I need from the council is with direction, if you would like to direct me to go. Um, if you would like to take advantage of the partnership with the county, then um, I'll write a letter um, confirming that, or if you want to keep the code enforcement in-house, town, um, and have us do it, then I'll need you to direct me to write a letter to the commissioners, thank you, but we'll move in a different direction.
Thanks, but okay.
I think just keep it in-house.
We need a motion to keep it in-house?
Yes, please.
And I'd like to make a motion to keep uh, the nuisance officer in-house.
A second.
Motion made in second, vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on down to the logging grant.
So in our work session, also we went over the TLT, the motion grant. Um, I've made the requests for changes, and that the timeline would be um, that um, applicants can turn in their um, their application before the fifteenth day of the following month. Then the council will have a work session, will um, grade the applications on the um, application project proposal that's at the end of the application, and then we'll send it through to council for approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application, grant application package.
And then, um, just so you know, this is for twenty twenty-two only.
Right.
Right.
And then when uh, twenty twenty-three rolls around, we'll make the adjustments and put it back onto uh, quarterly schedule. But for this year, we'll make an exception.
And for those that weren't here, it's because previously the timeline showed quarterly, and so to get money, you wouldn't be able to get any money until after July or August.
This year.
And so this year, so this, that's why we wanted to try to make it where you can put in applications now. If you put an application in before the fifteenth of this month, next month we would have, be able to go over it and approve it.
I have a question. What's the, what's the current TLT balance, and what's the approximate amount of the uh, applications that you have?
Um, I could give you an estimate, cause I don't, I didn't bring my budget, I could go get it. But I believe that the TLT funds is at a two hundred and thirty thousand, a little bit less than two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred in rough, rough numbers, right?
That, that's correct.
And then what's, um, how many uh, dollars have been requested in applications so far?
Zero, cause we don't have an application approved yet.
The, you mean the form?
Uh-huh.
Of, of the processor?
This is correct, I hear.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, you're working with about two hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-two?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Ginger, is that the current application?
This, this is the one that we, you were working off at the work session, I haven't seen the.
I'll get you the one? Yeah, I'll get you the.
Yeah, that'd be great, um, it's, isn't it, excuse me, in the uh, application, are there gonna be parameters about how much you can request, and uh, how long the request time is? In other words, if um, somebody applies on June fifteenth, you review it on July one, correct?
Correct.
And it gets approved, so when, is it a year, or is it six months, or? How long, how long of a period does, do we have for completing a project, or whatever it is that is done?
I think that's part of what is presented, and then it's discussed during that time, it's not, you know, like there's no specific.
All right. That's fine, I'm just.
Well, I understand, well, say, say you have for a hundred thousand dollars to do a project, we could say, well, we're on June the fifteenth, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be, I don't think it has.
No, I understand that, but then.
I don't think that, yeah, your question was, I don't think it has to be that specific.
Okay.
Right.
So we just, we probably need to put the sideboards on there for timeline and all of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but is there, like, you said this is for twenty-two, so does this need, does that mean that it probably need to be um, spent in twenty-two? And then you start over again in twenty-three?
Or, or we could have you, the council could request that you come back, or we can amend it, or?
Okay, gotcha, okay, we can talk about all of it together.
From that point of view, maybe they mean dispersed in twenty twenty-two, what you do with it is what you're.
Yeah, because there's need to be reporting in and all that, so we can.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. I'm just used to these, these pesky foundations, and they have all these rules. Pesky is a member of the street.
I don't wanna be pesky.
Thank you.
Council George be pesky.
Okay.
Make it as easy as possible.
So I made a motion, yeah.
So through the elections?
Sorry.
Do you have a favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move on down to race update, Dirk?
Good evening, Mr. Matt, council, staff, good evening. Just wanted to bring it all up to date on where we are, we're, we're getting close, I'm getting excited. Scott, you had a question last time, it was about the fire permit, and it's not gonna be an issue. I, I said that the city might have to do it because of conflict, because it's been fixed, he's back, so life's good, so I just wanted to get that back to you. I need permission to, I've got twelfth signs order, they're roughly three feet by two feet, they say ARMA with an arrow on them. And I'd like to hang two, maybe three, coming in from Bend on the way into town, these are arrows pointing to the, to the track location. And then coming in from Alteris, and then coming in from Clamath Falls. And then right here on Center Street, there'll, there'll be a couple signs that point up the canyon, and we'll clean them up the next day, when we're done.
Uh, anything on state highway has to be provided out, not by us.
Yeah.
So anything that you have on state highway has to be approved.
What do I find then?
I can get contacted for me.
Cause I, I, cause I don't feel like I'm sale.
Anything that directs traffic has to be approved by the doctor, basis, state, everything.
Yeah. I do it in Clamath Falls and they, they disappear quick.
Yeah. So yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to get a hold of probably Steve Anderson about it. He's with it, uh. And he could answer that question, if not, he could direct you to the individual, he can, and John has his contact information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, secondly, I wanted to.
Center Street, I think, you know, some of the council by now, two probably knows, but do you think on state highway?
Okay, I'll get it done, I just, I'm just. Uh, I just wanted to share with you that we have, we are working a deal, or it's been approved, I believe, with uh, Chamber that we're using buses, rather than loading up, the road up and down with citizens and stuff for transportation. But I need to know if you guys have a place where we could suggest everybody parks, so that the bus can pick them up, to take them up.
City parking lot is about the best spot.
Okay, that's what I have there.
And there, um, that's where the Chamber bus parks.
You got it, it's. Okay.
One problem with that, it's a pretty small area.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, because they, and they're the, they're parking their vehicles, something like that, many vehicles, we're gonna, and we're big.
You're gonna.
Well, we need. Park six parked right behind the pool too. And then people park and pull off on the side of the road, right there.
No, right.
Yeah, but you, you're looking at ten cars in the town parking lot, and six cars around the pool, right?
So I'm just giving options for different locations.
Well, I, I just anticipate a problem, trying to find a solution.
How many cars?
You might want to talk to the playgrounds.
The playgrounds, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead. Can you see if they they'll let you know their parking lot?
At at a foot?
Get a hole.
I I think what you're really asking for is is a pickup point more than anything.
Yeah.
And people can kind of park where they can find space for pickup.
Get a hole running out, fairgrounds.
I think that for the fairgrounds, that's gonna give you plenty of room for parking, plenty of room for buses.
Right.
Okay, uh.
And now you're not gonna throw it scattered.
Yeah, so I, you know, that's all I need is cars rolling in and.
Exactly, I I always talk to running out of the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
I I anticipate a a very large local turnout, I we raced three times in Oregon. And turnouts have not been what I would call too large because of gas prices and stuff. So, I'm expecting about a hundred times fifty total this first time, which is reasonable. So, uh, the flyers have gone out with all the restaurants, with contacted restaurants, they're all on the the motels, you know, stores, eateries, stuff, stuff like that, it's all on it. Um, burn piles, we're starting to clean. We got a neighbor's particularly want me to start building burn piles at, up there, you know, start dragging the roof clumps and stuff too.
You can probably talk to this gentleman, since he wants to.
Hi, what do you want me to put them?
Is that the gun, right?
No, it's gonna be across at the the track is actually go through the green gates, turn right across the creek and it's gonna be right in that particular area.
It's gonna be kind of south of the governor's, yeah.
You know, I I would suggest get ahold of Dustin Stotson down at Olya. Okay. Okay, if possible, that'd be. Uh, they're all over at uh down right down the. Um, we dropped scholarship paperwork for the uh we talked about doing a scholarship for people going into the trades. We've got one right now, if we were to make more money, we would do a second one and possibly a third one. Um, right now, the money's available and uh we dropped the paperwork up at the high school, so. Great. Yeah, I think so, the goal is to get as many as we can, I I I'm gonna strongarm all the race, you know, get me a hundred dollar one that called caps on yours. So, what? Yeah, you're just giving your deep food, so. Uh, food vendors, we're using Anderson's, um, like you say, the motels and the hotels and the food places have been contacted and when they found out, it was absolutely free to put them on the list of it all for. And uh, fire permits? Okay. Kevin Bardou's giving us a priority, loading us the this water truck, that one that's real fancy that shoots water here, weigh the hell out there. Okay, so, yeah, and uh.
It's a nice truck.
That's really all I have, I just wanted to, it's it's just I'm starting sharing where where we are. They need to be here every every meeting between now and the race and then after the race, you know.
Well, right now, it's awful wet up there, it's beating much anything.
And then.
Yeah, I was there today.
The date for this again is?
Uh, June eleventh and twelfth. My guys will start showing up on that Thursday, someone would come from the East Coast, they just get all the circuit around. And so, that's why uh Brad was saying that it will open up on the Thursday.
Interesting.
So. Uh, any questions for me? No, counter.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time, uh Bruce, did you want to mention any? Bruce Bruce is my partner, obviously. Okay, thank you.
I'll be quiet for a change.
For a change. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move down to department report, John.
Um, I wish I could tell you more, I feel like I've done tons of stuff.
Cool.
I have one more thing I wanted to say. Ginger, were you gonna talk?
Um, I was gonna spare them, but.
Would you like, I I just wanted to tell them what we've been working on.
Yeah, so, I just really quickly, um, we're gonna be showing the movie on any Sunday on Saturday night, um, the first day of the event. And um, LCP has agreed to um uh, support this effort because we really feel like it's something that's unique and that, you know, we would like to see it get started. It's something that could be a yearly event and the theater obviously wants to be a part of that. So, we have the ability to do that and anytime you can see uh Steve McQueen on the big screen, I think it's a good idea, so.
Murph Law though was coming up, Murph is the star of the show. And uh, he's he's sick, he can't make it, but he would love to be here, we had a talk with him and uh it was this close, but you just and I I just got the feelings, the long-term COVID stuff, so. Maybe next year.
It's uh M O T O, right, Motocross?
M O T O, yes.
M O T O, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Budget, we're in middle of budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Morning. That's it?
That's right.
Okay. You got anything to add to your report there?
I have nothing further. I have nothing further unless you have a question.
Okay. How's the training going with Thomas Strickland?
I'm assuming we're getting six, eight people out there, off and on.
Good. Nine on nine, we don't have a report. Public Works?
Maybe a copy of the report.
You have anyone to add to this? See your spring ones are doing good.
Spring spring ones are twice twice as much as last month. Only thing we have going different is we're we're going through the shop right now to make everything grocery compliant. We're starting a major tear tear apart and redo and make sure we don't get redo things according to code instead of that just going to get done with then upper handrail around the upper deck that will pass now. So, it's just uh we're trying to shop part one section at a time, let me get time, so this is gonna take probably a year before we do it, the time that we have.
Okay.
And then we got the build, we have two old barns soon around third one S, and then we did get finding two hundred foot down and then there was going to go a break and get there. So, they started the rebuilding for the new water treatment facility, that way came inside of four zero last week. Everything else is momentum.
Do you have any time scheduled for flushing the water lines?
Right now, we don't, with the weather finally breaking, uh, I mean, it starts indicating the pool.
The pool portion.
Down, we're gonna do the pool for the, we have we have metering next week that we have to get down, we have two guys that never read meters. Um, so, metering is gonna take probably a few days, we'll come in, I'm just gonna. Wish first read of the season because of what the the weather is, it takes a longer anyway, so. So, we can get that done, we're gonna schedule a pool and get that painted and see if that goes up in the summer.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Special project, Scott?
Now, we're moving forward on the water plant. Um, we had Amber here, yes, screw, yeah, yesterday, today's kind of blended together right now. Could do more water sampling to determine what arsenic we're dealing with and what uh state the iron magnesium is in to start the thirty percent desium plant. We got that done Monday. Week prior to that, we worked on GIS all week, it's coming along really good. Um, we got most of the, most of the water stuff.
Probably eighty percent.
Yeah. And they'll be back uh Tuesday next week for three more days to finish water and start on some of the other stuff. We're we're moving forward with that, um, I've seen a couple of uh shots, what is similar to what I've done and pretty happy with how it's going. Yeah, it's pretty much it, geothermal's finally done. Uh, they're running about a hundred and thirty-seven gallons a minute.
To the prison?
Yes, to the prison. We're required to give them a hundred and twenty, they're getting about one thirty-five, one thirty-eight is what it's running. We're not plugging filters out there before the eight hours like we were, so between Jeff and I, we uh we got that put back together and it's running good. Um, we've gone apart. We should be getting splash pad stuff mid-July, it keeps getting cut off. It should be going out to bid, um hopefully next month. The White House and the engineering. And Michelle and I have been working on another grant, which would give us more money to put towards that, hopefully we'll know about that in the next two weeks. Kind of where we're at.
I've got kids asking about it.
That's true, the biggest the biggest holdup.
I do.
Yes, the biggest holdup is getting the material here.
Yeah.
And they wanted to ship, you know, a piece here and a piece there, and Michelle and I talked about that, it's better we just ship everything all at one time. And they're not expecting to have all the pieces and parts go there right around the first of July, so I imagine we'll see it November July.
So, they probably won't have it this year, right?
If they do, I think it's gonna be a very short period.
Couple weeks.
Hey, they'll take a week or two.
It.
Mm-hmm.
They'll take any.
It's gonna be shooting. They'll be.
Hey, these kids will surprise you.
Six weeks.
That's right.
Probably six to eight weeks. It it's what's it, what that will depend on, to be honest with you, is how much grant money we have and how far we're gonna go with the park, 'cause the overall plan is to put some sidewalks through there and update the bathrooms, ADA compliant, bigger shape structure and all that. If this grant comes through, Michelle and I are working on now, we'll be able to do all that. But the splash pad will go first and then we'll start with the others.
Okay. Public comments? So, this may have got to council on items that may or may not be on the subject of meeting agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, the council will refer to right to limit the number of speakers pertaining to the same topic in the interest of the meeting's efficiency and expectancy. Any public comments?
Okay, I just have one thing I would like to say is that I'm very happy to say the Public Works is starting to put out the planters and the um trash receptacles that we were able to uh get from the Travel Oregon Grant. And also, there's at least one more bench I need to talk to after, or one of you after about um placing one. And um, that that's all, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that's starting to happen, and then it snowed.
I was curious if the grant had had any provision for the fox oil to go in the planters?
No, it was just the hardware, nothing about that, but we did discuss it at the time we were doing the planning for it and Michelle thought maybe there might be some funds available somewhere for that. But I don't know.
We'll keep digging around.
We'll figure it out.
What's the status on that parclit thing? We ran it up here, I don't know.
Try.
Well, dude, we talked about the parclit, we we need one sole bay of no snow, no rain to assemble this thing, so. As soon as.
And where's it gonna go in front of the chamber?
Every time someone mentions it, it snows. Thanks, Jay.
The famous.
I I did forget one thing, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, um, the pool. I've gotten some donations and some volunteers to tear the ceiling out where it was sagging in the main part of the pool. You guys got it all tore out, but uh K Bar Six Construction, uh David Dooley from Emress Hurley and myself have donated our time, uh, my wife and I are paying for the sheetrock and the lights. So, we're hoping to have new ceiling put in in the front half of that building, the interior for half of that building, uh reshoot rock and paint it before the season starts. So, yeah.
And the pool will be painted hopefully next week?
The pool will be painted. But we should have, we're looking at a good season at the pool this year, we got a good group of lifeguards that we've interviewed, uh so, if anybody wants to donate to the pool, we'd be more than happy to take donations, we have a lot of work to do up there.
Yeah.
Question, how much topsoil, how much soil do you think we needed for all of those planters?
That's an excellent question.
Will you give back to me, Mark?
For sure.
Thank you.
I I think it's gonna be eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
What?
Probably over topsoil, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's let's see about talking to um the stewards.
Yeah.
Okay. And does that include, is there planters on the parclit?
Pardon?
Were there planters?
Yeah, there are.
Does that include the parclit planters as well?
Well, the parclit, the parclit did not come with the with the inserts to put the put plants in.
I don't know.
So, what happened to it was figuring out how to be able to put smaller pots in those.
It's so, we need to talk to the manufacturer, 'cause that was supposed to be part of it, so we need to call them and talk to them. I can help you with that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff have any comments? No? Council have any comments? I do. Just let you know, I've I've been asked by the Lake of Oregon Cities to sit uh on one of the boards for um homeless. So, I've accepted that position and I'm waiting through all my paperwork and.
It's up, right?
You don't forget to die to um get a pie in the face.
Yeah, I put the first five first five bucks in, I'm so proud of that, five dollars is stuck in that.
She volunteered.
It's good for you.
She even admitted.
Hey, Brock, you did it, good money box is out, Brock.
I'll pay pretty good if it's a cow fight.
You'll make a lot more money. Not hearing any more business. At uh five forty-six.